Time I will call the media and the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would request that item 14, the city attorney RFPs be pulled from the agenda. I believe that solicitation of three separate RFPs for three separate city attorney duties is inconsistent with the requirements in Charter Section 3.04, which indicates that the mayor shall nominate the person singular to serve as city attorney to assume all of those duties. And then how they're divided up, that's up to the city attorney. But there's a potential in responding to these city attorney solicitations or RFPs, you could have three people appointed as city attorney, each with different duties. And I believe that's inconsistent with the terms of the charter, which are the governing document for the city of Marshall. So I would request that the RFP solicit all duties that one city attorney would be appointed to do, as has been done in the past.
The Charter doesn't address requests for proposals, though.
It does not.
So the...
But I think there's a potential you could award duties to three separate individuals, each appointed as city attorney with overlapping duties.
The issue, though, that you're addressing is on appointment, not RFP.
And I'm just concerned that the solicitation of partial duties through an RFP might be in violation of the Charter, depending upon how it shakes out.
You have a comment?
I just wanted to mention that the RFPs were developed kind of to give the city more options in terms of potential city attorney services. And maybe the RFP was not clear enough, but the general council RFP would be the appointed city attorney. And the city attorney can determine with the consent of the council who would oversee land use and criminal. I often see criminal and civil split into two among Charter cities. So I think that at least at a minimum, the civil and criminal could be separated, just from what I've seen from other communities. And, I mean, certainly, we can go back and revise it. I don't think that would be a problem. But I do think the RFP can be split. And I think, Mr. Mayor, your point about, you know, seeking proposals is, doesn't lend directly to this language on appointment. And I guess I got a question for the city attorney on this language. Do you know who gave guidance to the city council on this city attorney Charter language?
I do not.
Okay, because it really almost states that the council can't hire anybody unless a city attorney approves. And my knowledge is, limited knowledge, is that, you know, a client can't be prohibited from hiring their own attorney by another attorney. It just seems a little fraught with legality, to be honest. So, separate from the RFP, it might be a worthy discussion for the Charter Commission at some point to look at the Charter language. So I just wanted to comment on those things.
I think that that is a Charter Commission discussion.
The Charter as it now exists, I believe, does not authorize what you're doing. But the Charter can be amended.
And the...
In one of four ways, three of which require a vote of the public to approve the amendments.
Well, there's been a request to remove it from the agenda. What's the wishes of the council?
Like I've said many times, we're just asking for proposals. So I think it's worth seeing what the proposals are. We're not asking to appoint anybody. We're not looking to appoint anybody. And I know, I've said many times, I've said, you rest me. We're just looking for proposals. We may not take them. We may have to consider other options after we get to proposals. But I think it's worth looking at proposals at this time, because otherwise it drags out another six, seven, eight months, and we're still where we're at today. So I'm always like the option of looking at options.
Any other opinion?
At a point in time, is it appropriate for the questions that council has brought forward to the city council to maybe go in front of a request to League of Minnesota Cities to get a decision?
I contacted them asking for advice or guidance, and they had no advice or guidance other than to point out my concerns to the council. So I've gone to the league as well.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
State that currently on the League of Minnesota Cities website, there's an RFP for legal services, split into two, civil and criminal.
John?
Yeah, I guess, just my thoughts, this is just a request for proposal. So I, you know, again, we're not committed one way or the other in either accepting it or the results or whatever. It is just an investigation, I think, like you're saying, Jim. So I'm, myself, I'm okay with proceeding. But obviously, I think you bring up a question that needs to be addressed before we take any action that may occur on our request for proposal. So as far as, you know, we may not...
Yep. So the discussion item right now, though, is whether or not to have it on the agenda or not. So my sense is, we have it on the agenda. It'll get discussed thoroughly on Agenda I of number 14.
That sounds fine.
Okay. So any other changes to the agenda? Right under that agenda, the first item then would be, consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on May 10. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any questions?
With approval.
Second motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been prepared. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Might want to point out, EJ, things are going good so far, so.
You're a thousand right now.
Right. We'll move then to Agenda I of number two. This would be a ward of bids for the Rose parking lot reconstruction. We'll consider the resolution declaring the intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds. And then after that, then we'll consider the resolution that would accept a bid and award the contract. I'll call on Director of Public Works City Engineer Jason Anderson to present this.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the reconstruction of the Rose parking lot adjacent to West Lion Street. It's the lot that's located directly behind the wooden nickel. The plan would be to remove the existing surfacing, which is in poor condition, and to pave it back with a new concrete surface. The general layout will be very similar to as it is today. We did review that in great detail with the PIT Committee. On May 18, we did receive three bids for the project. The low bid was submitted by RNG Construction of Marshall in the amount of $140,177.51. This is just below our estimate of 149,900. So staff would recommend to award the project. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any questions?
Jason, just one question. I see there's one less handicap stall. What's the reasoning for that? Just so the public is aware.
Sure. So the requirement, I believe, is one per 25 stalls for accessible stalls. And I believe that with the 50 stalls, we determined that two would be required. So that's where we went with two.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe in the last two years, you've added quite a few right along Fifth Street there, too, correct? Three, I think it's three or four, haven't we?
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, if anybody comes forward with concerns, we can certainly evaluate them at that time.
I think historically that the extra one there was when the funeral home was operating on that street, that side of the street.
Okay.
And now they have their own parking lot.
Any other questions? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution declaring official intent reimbursement.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And EJ, it's not up on the screen. And the motion does pass. Agenda I of number three, West Lion Street, College to First Street Reconstruction Project. Once again, similar actions.
There a second part to that?
Yes, there is. Thank you, Craig. The second part of Agenda I of number two is a resolution that would accept a bid and award the contract to the low responsible bidder.
That resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda I of number three, this is the West Lion Street College to First Reconstruction Project. Similar actions or requests, the resolution regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of taxes, got bonds, as well as then the resolution that would accept and award the bid. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the one block reconstruction of West Lion Street bounded between College Drive and North First. This was originally scheduled to be reconstructed last year with the rest of the streets in the area. But we, as staff and council, determined we should take that out of that project while we wait for the Block 11 development to take shape. Now, we've had some really recent actions authorizing that transaction and that project to go forward. And we do have plans for the Block 11 development in hand. And we expect that that would start pretty soon over there. So we went ahead and pushed this project forward. This would be a replacement of the street and the addition of a couple utility extensions to better serve the Block 11 development in its future phases. We would also propose, we are proposing, concrete pavement on this project as well. On May 19, we received bids for the project. Two bids were received, with the low bid coming also from RNG Construction of Marshall in the amount of $409,645.10. This was overestimate of, our estimate on the project was a little over $330,000. This project would be proposed to be financed in accordance with our current special assessment policy. When you add in contingencies and allowance, we're just shy of $500,000 with $498,950 for the project. We did have some confirmation with our finance staff and some conversations regarding funding for this, being, seeing that it was a little over budget. And we do have assurance that the city is positioned to pay for this project as it came in with the bids. It is an uncertain bidding environment. That's kind of the times that we're dealing with right now with material shortages. And another big change we've noticed is concrete prices have gone quite a bit higher. And we knew that was coming from conversations with the suppliers. So here for any questions. We would recommend to approve.
Okay. Question for Jason.
I have a question, and maybe it's more for EJ. Where is the extra $77,000 coming from?
I can start the conversation. So when we, at the time of preparation of CIP, and by the time we're bonding, we're in higher level scoping cost estimates. So I think our cost estimates started a little higher than our final ended. And then in addition to that, we bond, we round up $25,000. It's kind of our past practice. We do little things that give us that cushion, just in case we run a little bit above estimate. That would be my explanation. I don't know if you've got a different one, EJ.
I would also throw out there, what we discussed was that with total bonding, we also did some bonding for the parking lot projects. And we're hoping that those both come in lesser than we needed for what we bonded for that. So we're talking an overall project that we'd be able to do both portions.
That's a, that's a great point. Sorry I missed that. We originally started out with the Rose parking lot and the Addison parking lot by the movie theater. And we've since shifted our focus to getting the Baldwin parking lot done this year, which is smaller. So we set up to bond for the two parking lots with a little bit more surface area. Now we're looking at smaller area to cover. So that, there's additional funding there in how we bonded. So some things come in a little under. This one comes a little over. We come out really close.
Jason, just a question. You know, during our committee meeting, we discussed quite extensively of concrete versus asphalt. You said concrete is up. Is asphalt continue to be up because of oil prices? Or do you think that, I mean, it's too late to look at asphalt now because we're looking at the bids tonight. But is there a possibility that it could have been cheaper with asphalt?
I think the upfront cost would have been a little cheaper with the bituminous product, just because it naturally is slightly cheaper. It comes with higher maintenance costs along its life. But the cost would have been fairly high, too. You know, it is a small project. And anytime we deal with smaller quantities, especially on the asphalt paving side, we really seem to pay for it.
And my second part of that, there's very few property owners on that street. So when you're saying assessments, the city's going to pick up probably a good share of that reconstruction, I mean, besides utilities and things like that, because there's very few property owners on that. So Advalorm will probably pick up a good percentage of this project.
I don't have an exact number for you, but that's a fair judgment, Councilman.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Jason, just a question.
Go ahead.
The Block 11 developer will pay assessment fees.
To the best of my knowledge, that is going to occur. I know that I've been given that, giving that information to Lauren Deitz and prior Annette Storm. And I think EJ's been working on that, too. So I think that there, the Block 11 developer will be paying assessments.
And the Block 11 developer is aware of this assessment coming down the pipeline?
There has been a building permit issued for that project.
Not issued yet, but submitted. And I believe we've received payment today. So it should be well on its way.
This afternoon, we received payment.
Any other questions? If not, do you have a recommendation? What wishes of the council?
I'll move that adopt a resolution for the declaring official intent and reimbursement.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move to, oh, go ahead.
I apologize. I just want to clarify, the drawing on the exhibit shows angle parking on both sides. That's incorrect. It's an outdated drawing. We've since revisited that and the different dimensions. And we've spoken to council and committee as well. But it'll be one side parallel, one side angle parking, just to be clear.
First one.
So the, I'll now entertain a motion on the resolution that would accept a bid and award the contract.
I move the resolution.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move to the consent agenda. If we bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. Yeah, we make it a little bit larger. On the consent agenda, consideration of the wastewater and treatment facilities improvement project, consider the payment of invoice to Bolton Mink. The Baldwin parking lot reconstruction, consider the authorization to advertise for bids. Consider the grant of permanent easement with unique opportunities, Marshall LLC, Lot 1, Block 1, unique addition. Consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. Consider the application for the exempt permit for Holy Redeemer Church. And to consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion?
Number five.
Okay. Any other item? If not, I'd entertain a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda.
So will.
Motion by Russ.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote.
There we go.
Early and often. It's like Chicago.
And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number five is the Baldwin parking lot reconstruction, considering the authorization to advertise for bids. Jim?
This is a shared lot. Now, Jason and I chatted about this yesterday. And I know Russ and I actually talked about it today. And I don't have a problem with us doing some of the work on that lot, even though CenturyLink owns it. What I'd really like to see is a permanent easement using this lot. And I don't, I know, they say, I was told that they didn't know we even used the lot. It's like a permanent driveway easement. I know they may say it's too small for them to worry about. They sell this building in five years, and it may be a big problem for us, that before this project goes forward, I don't mind advertising for bids, but before I would support this project, we have some type of permanent easement with the title of these properties, just like a shared driveway easement, you know, shared easement in a property that is filed with the title of these, that property. So if they sell it in five years, we're not stuck with a parking lot that we can no longer use that we fixed up.
Craig?
Jason and I had that same conversation. And he actually, and I'm not an attorney, but I play one, you know, at home once in a while. This has made it through at least one sale already with the, you know, with the organization that we signed, with the leasor. And in the agreement, it's only a four-page agreement, but we're the ones that decide to stop using it as a parking lot. In my look at that, that's the only thing that changes that. Or if they probably would expand the building, I'm guessing that would change it also. But otherwise, it's, it only changes the agreement if we stop utilizing it.
But they should be, Dan is correcting me if I'm wrong, but I don't ever, I've done shared agreements. It's filed with the property at the courthouse. And I don't believe this one is.
I disagree. I think it has, there's a permanent, there's a permanent access easement off of, off the street.
It is filed, and if that's the case, that's fine. I just want to see, make sure that we have double-checked that. If it is, great.
Because we had prepared another agreement recently that the, those property owners would not agree to. But we use that as the basis for the existing agreement as form.
And we should check, is there dates on that agreement? You know, I mean...
I've got it back in my office. I'll check.
No, I'm fine. I just would like to see that or have that attached with the bid so we, as a council, are aware of that. And, you know, if it's only 25 years, the use of the parking lot is 25 years. Because that may stop an expansion of their building. Because we'd have to fix up this parking lot. And I don't know why they would expand the building, because they don't use it.
Right.
But we don't know what their future use will be, but we can dictate it with the agreement.
Just to be clear, though, our easement is only for the 15 feet that we use to ingress and egress our parking spots. That other part of that property that goes from the edge of that easement to their building isn't part of it, but we maintain it. The agreement says that we maintain it.
Well, then should we include the rest of that with that easement? Because 15 feet...
We can't open that up. If we open that up, I think this whole thing goes away. Because they don't want, they don't want to spend the time to even look at this. That's the understanding that I have.
It's 15 feet enough of an easement. See, I don't believe 15 feet's enough of an easement.
It is what we've always used. If we leave this alone...
We use more, maybe what's in the agreement, but we use more than that.
If we leave this alone, I think it runs fine. They don't want to pay attention. They don't want to know about us. The only way they're going to know about us is if we raise our hand and jump up and down and make them know about us. I think as long as we let this thing keep going, they're not going to expand that building. And if they do, great, because we're going to pick up more tax real, and maybe we can build a parking lot somewhere else with the revenue we get from them. But I think right now, this is a pretty good piece for what we've used it for. I think we leave the dog alone, and we fix this and move on. It's what, $36,000?
Correct.
Yeah, let's just move on and do this thing. Does that, parking spots?
All right. If there's some type, I can settle for 15 feet, because basically, we're getting paid taxes on a parking lot that we use.
Exactly.
So that's right. And that's the same conversation that Jason. But if there's a 15-foot easement through that, I could probably live with that. I would just like to see that attached, just so it's out there publicly.
Jason, you want to say something?
Yeah, if I may. I agree. I think both points well taken. You know, Councilman Losinski, I think the first thing we'll check before the end of the week is, is this recorded? Because I actually don't know that. I have my copy. My copy does not have a recorded stamp on it.
That's what...
But it is executed. So I want to check that. And we will explore our options and our opportunities with their real estate division, like we kind of have. And I've got an established communication right now, and we'll keep going with it. I do want to walk carefully to Councilman Schaefer's point, because we have had this agreement in place since 1993. It has been effective. Nobody's been complaining about each other, and it's worked. So we want to try to tread lightly to make sure that we, we keep it going for the city marshal. So, but we are interested, and I think they are interested, in allowing work to occur on their property. It kind of aligns with the agreement already, because the agreement does talk about, we maintain, we, we keep it up. Little hairy on reconstruction, but, you know, for $36,000 in the last 30 years of use and the next 30 years of use, it's not a bad deal, in our opinion.
And the dance moms use that for pickup at the end of the day. And CenturyLink doesn't leave vehicles parked there. So it's open for them to do that. We're just not, we wouldn't want to leave vehicles overnight to where we're interfering with them during the day. But I think this thing works out really good. I've never paid attention to this until the last two months. And now when I drive through, I kind of look at it. And I think it works fine. And I think we just keep on being neighbors.
It is for $1,000 a year. It is. It's, you're not going to find parking in most cities for that, for one car, for six months.
Right.
But with that, with that discussion, is there a motion to authorize?
Mr. Mayor, just, I'm not going to disagree with anything that's been said or been brought up, because as Councilman Losinski, it is $1,000 a year. I'm just concerned that a business is telling the city that we're not paying the bill. That's what my concern is. I mean, you take the dollar value out of it. We've got a business, a building that's sitting there that, Jason, I think in my email to you, I'm guessing is probably 85% to 90% vacant. Will they ever add on to that building? I would doubt it. I would think they'd probably tear most of it down someday, maybe not in any of our lifetime. But the precedent of setting that a corporate citizen like CenturyLink is telling the city, we're not interested in messing with you. We're not, we're not interested in talking to you. We don't want anything to do with you. Just, if you want to improve the lot, you can pay the bill. Not even to make an offer, yeah, we'll pay 10%. Yeah, we'll pay 50%. Because it also benefits them. It benefits them with a, with an improved parking lot. It benefits them with snow removal. If we didn't do it, who would do it? Not the one or two employees that go in and out of that building. They're not going to do it. And we, we're just spending an excess north of $100,000 right over here. We're going to have four or six parking stalls? I don't remember the, four? So, yeah, is it a good buy? I'm not going to deny you that it's not a good buy. I'm just going to say it's a bad precedent to set.
So the agreement, though, that has been referenced allows public use of that parking So the agreement, though, that has been referenced allows public use of that parking lot? They don't use it. The public uses it, the downtown business people use it, the apartment dwellers.
Not during the day, not during the week, Bob.
Apartment dwellers use it. Well.
Not during the week.
The, it provides parking, and but for that parking, they'd be parking somewhere else.
But we also had during reconstruction of City Hall, I, I could be wrong, Sharon, help me out here, Jason. We had, we were told a couple of different times that our contractors infringed upon their space, that we had to move vehicles. It wasn't that often, maybe it was one or two times, but it was, it didn't allow that one vehicle or two vehicles to park in their space. So I'm not sure you're correct in saying that it's available during, during the day, during the day.
Well, those parking spaces don't disappear during the day. Someone's parking there.
The city is.
Well, yeah.
And nobody's parking, no, against the building, Bob. That's what I'm talking about, against the building. That's Century Link parking, and the, and the 10 spot that the city uses.
I think the issue is with the contractors parking at City Hall during construction was the existing parking stalls. It wasn't against the building of Century Link. It was more on existing parking, and photos were displayed and things like that. So I don't think it was mostly next to that Century Link building.
Like I said, I can't, I can't disagree with what Councilman Schaefer, Councilman Lozinski said. I mean, it's a good buy, Jason, it is a good buy. We could not buy 10 parking spaces in another part of this area for $1,000 a year. There's no way. I mean, $10,000 a year might be a better number, if we could even get it for that. But again, I'm just saying, it's a precedent we're setting. Jason, in my email to you, what happens in, in next year when we have assessments, when we redo that road? Is Century Link going to come back to us and say, we're not paying the bill? We see no benefit to our property because our building is 90% empty? We're going to end up in court.
They would have the right, they would have the right to take us to court, but we would love the assessment, and barring court order, they would pay it.
Yeah.
I think.
Not the first time.
Councilman Labatt's point, I think, is, is that they're not, they're not telling us that they're not going to pay, because it's not something that we can typically charge them for, because this is an improvement to their private property that we're going to tax them on. The difference is, is that the agreement that we executed in 1993 says that we'll maintain it and move snow on it for the right to have that 15-feet easement. So it's a trade of service or use in kind. And so I, to me, that's a, that's a win-win, shared, shared property boundary benefit. And it's not like we're going in and doing a street and sidewalk improvement, and then they're telling us, I don't care, we're not paying it, because then we have recourse. And then we can either, we can either put it on their taxes, and they can fight us in court, or whatever, and then that's kind of the, we've already been through that fight with assessments on commercial and residential buildings. And we have the benefit of having a court ruling. But this is a different deal. This is something they can tell us, they could tell us we don't want the improvement too, and we would, we would let that go. But we, if we stopped using that 15 feet, then we would stop moving snow. I wouldn't want us to try to move snow from concrete to that bad surface if we didn't do that piece of it, because I think at a point in time, we'd destroy it. So either way, we're going to have to maintain it, because we need that 15 feet. I just think it's a good agreement. But I, I understand your point, Russ, but I, I think it's different than an assessment.
Hold up a question, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we have a motion at this point.
Motion in a second.
I'll make a motion that we just move ahead with the advertising of bids, which has nothing to do with most of the conversation we've had in reality, so.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig, discussion? If not, we'll move to, to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 10, consider the, excuse me, agenda item number 10, consider the annual adoption of the resolution declaring Saltona Summer as a community festival. Any questions about this? Clear a motion?
Or move.
Motion by John.
Second.
Seconded by Jim, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting.
No, just wait.
Nope.
All right, I'm good.
Now we'll close the voting.
You go, Jim.
I think I did. We're going to find out.
Stained, Jim?
I did not.
And the motion, motion does pass. Agenda item number 11, legislative update, this was put on the agenda late last week prior to the adjournment of this legislative session. Our representative from Flaherty and Hood, Marty Seifert, who has represented us on our resolution that was passed by this council for the right to have a public vote on the extension of our sales tax. Marty is not available this evening, would be available at a future meeting. As we all know, the, the sales tax extension was included in the conference report, and then was included in the omnibus tax bill, was not, the omnibus tax bill was not acted on. The Southwest Mayor, Council Mayor's Workforce Initiative that would provide tuition reimbursement for trades that are identified by the Workforce Council in Southwest Minnesota. That was also included in the conference report, so it was included in the, the omnibus jobs bill, but that also was not acted on by the legislature. The several capital requests, including the Merit Center, SMSU, and the renovation to accommodate a learning center in Social Science Building, that also was not, there was no bonding bill. So with us tonight, and Sharon, I'll let you introduce, but with us tonight is Cliff Carmody, as well as others who may want to comment on the, on the legislative actions or enactions, as well as the prospect of what happens now. Sharon?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I did invite Cliff Carmody from the Service Cooperative to talk about their learning center proposal that would be initially, right now, they're looking at teaming up with SMSU and has requested bonding dollars. Cliff is joined by Kim Bars, who's their consultant on building. And if they want to come forward, I, if that's okay with you. And then we also have Jim Marshall, who can talk about Merit Center bonding, and then Preston Stensrude, who can kind of give us an update, just a little bit on the pool. And he's going to get it ready this year, but it's always a struggle each year, so I thought that might be a good discussion as we try to keep going on sales tax, so.
Thank you, Sharon. Cliff?
And Kim.
Thank you, Sharon. I'm Cliff Carmody and Mayor, for inviting us, I'm Cliff Carmody. I'm the executive director of the Service Cooperative here in Marshall. We like to fly below the radar as well, so we don't stand up and wave and jump and announce to people, say it's too often, even. We're, we're an educational service agency, it's the best way for me to describe it. We cover 18 counties, 55 public schools are members, and we employ right around 430 people. With me is Kim Bars. If you'll bear with me just a minute, give you a little background, then we'll dive into some of the, the more recent conversations that we've been having. Kim Bars is with OR Management. We've been working on this stuff since 2016, I believe it was, and, and trying to find ways that we can improve the educational facilities for at-risk children. Children IEPs, high-needs behavior, think, autism, other kinds of behavioral disorders. And we have six sites, we identified six sites around the region. Bellevue is the current site that we'd like to move to Marshall. Bellevue's in an old, I don't know, 1950s vintage school, and it needs to be decommissioned. And, and so we've been looking at that as a part of our planning. So other sites include a Cosmos, which, 2017, 2018 or so, we were able to receive a $5 million grant from the state of Minnesota to repurpose an old elementary building there. We basically took, again, a 1950s vintage school and turned it into a facility now that has a useful life for 35 or 40 years, spent just shy of $8 million to do that, five from the state, and, and just shy of $3 million cash reserves that the co-op put in place. We're in Wilmer, where we're actually, right now, our program is housed in the old state hospital, best way to describe where that's at. It's called Midwest Technology Campus now, totally inappropriate for the work that we're doing. We've been working with Wilmer Public Schools to move that program to a new facility that will be constructed in, adjacent to their middle school. We built a brand-new facility in Montevideo. We did that in collaboration with the city of Montevideo and the EDA. We rent space from Minnesota West Technical School, I guess is the way I would call them now, I mean, it was college in Pipestone for our program there, and then in Windon, we, we are in an elementary building. We moved from an older facility to a newer facility. The, the way we do this, because of what SWWC is, we're, we're public, just like the city is. The primary difference is we have no taxing authority, we have no way to bond for, for, for anything or finance any of these projects. And so we have to get real creative in how we make that happen. And so when we've done this, we've, we've worked, I think Montevideo is a great example. The city approached us, they donated some land, the EDA actually financed that building for us, and so that's the way we were able to, to build that to our specifications and to meet our needs. And then we leased that space from them. We've got a long-term lease with a, with a potential buy in, in a 10-year term. And so when we looked at moving from Bellevue to Marshall, we started talking with, with Sharon, girl, this is probably, we almost been pre-pandemic times, and the pandemic got in the way, of course, with a lot of different things. We talked about how could we replicate the collaboration that we had done at Montevideo or Cosmos or some of the other places that were, were doing this. And, and we've been working hard at, at making that happen. It got a little more complicated. The college approached us and said, we have some space we'd like to, to repurpose. They had their own needs and wanting to do some other projects, and so we started down that path and, and working with the, the college. The Social Science Building is, is really the location. We brought in the school district because they have needs, and of course, the more partners you bring in, the more complicated some of these deals become, but we're able to do that. How does this become a legislative update and the, the latest legislative session? We, Senator Dames supported a, a request in the, in the bonding bill for us to, to pay for a portion of the, the leasehold improvements that need to be made at the Social Science Building. We cannot, we being SWWC could not be a recipient of those funds, because the attorneys from MMV tell us that we're not a political subdivision, which was a surprise to us. That's a whole nother story, we could spend a lot of time talking about. But, but that is what it is, and so we, we needed to put together an arrangement that would, would allow the, the funds to go to a political subdivision, and then we would be able to, to work out the details. And we didn't have all those details. Right now, it doesn't matter. There's no bonding bill, there's no money, and so now we need to pivot. And, and our pivot as of this hour is uncertain. We still have the issue of financing, whatever we'd want to do. We still have a need to move the Bellevue program out of that old elementary building into a, a suitable facility. We've looked at a lot of different options. The collaboration helps us save dollars, and so we like working with the public sector entities, because that in right of way saves dollars, so we continue to do that. We have some ideas. We'd like to continue to work with Sharon and the city and the EDA, they've been very good to work with, as we try to find solutions to this problem. But we wanted to bring you up to speed. It, it, it could be, it could be one solution is we could look at, at scaling up the, the overall cost of the project and still work with, with the university. That, that project there was such a win-win. They need, they're talking about tearing a building down. It's going to cost them $5 million to tear it down. We're talking about, you know, going in there and be able to repurpose that building. It was such a, a nice collaboration, we just haven't been able to figure out the details of financing it. So I don't know, Kim, if you had anything to add, or we could answer questions?
Yeah, I think that's the key, is, is that it's just a win-win-win. I mean, you have the university, they have a need, they're going to spend $5 million to get rid of it. It has a lot of useful life still. It's 50,000 square feet. We could take up almost all of it if we could come up with the collaboration. So for taxpayers, it's like, wow, this is just a, a complete win-win. So we're, we're going to pivot, we're going to try to figure out, can we scale down the renovation? Maybe we have to do it in two phases or what have you. So we're going to start to look at that and work with that, those parameters, and work with Sharon, and, and see if there's a way that we can work with the city and the EDA, and see if we can still bring this to fruition.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Cliff. Questions?
Maybe just add that we've been working with Baker Tilly a little bit on the financial side, because when you read some of this, it looks a little scary, and I know that Terry Heaton's been pretty inquisitive to the Service Cooperative on what this may look like, and that hasn't really been defined. I think we've been, at the city, been trying to promote more of a conduit bonding-type role, different than Montevideo, where they took on a building project. And I think the Service Cooperative is agreeable to exploring that. So it's a little bit different. We obviously want to protect our interests as well, but jobs-wise, economic development, it'd be, it'd be a good project for the city of Marshall, and, you know, these are our kids that are going to be in this facility, mostly our kids. Obviously, we've got some regional participation, so I think that's another factor on why we'd want to support this project.
It's not, it's not a huge, it's not a huge economic development, but just so you get some perspective, so when we talk about this program, if we have 35 to 40 children in this program, we'll have probably between 50 and 60 employees on site there. Because of the needs of the children, we need that kind of adult interaction. So it would bring jobs to the community that would, that aren't here today, and we think that's exciting, and we've appreciated, you know, Sharon and her work, and the staff who we've worked with, and recognizing that, and trying to help find a, a solution to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Clarification on, for the college, they're on a use it or lose it on those buildings, right? As soon as they sit empty for a couple of years, they're ordered to take them out, is that correct? And this is more for the general public that, that might be watching. They have to use it or lose it.
Right, and you are correct. And right now, the way it's situated is, is that they would be looking at about four to five years out, and it'll cost them $5 million, when you take in what it, the current operating expenses just for it to sit there. And by the time we fast-forward on what it's going to cost to raise that building, we're going to $5 million.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Public Safety, Jim Marshall, then we'll discuss the Merit Center proposal.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me a few moments to give you a brief update on the status of the funding request for the Merit Center. Time goes by so fast, but I think maybe a couple of you were part of the vision of the Merit Center over 25 years ago, and that vision has developed into a working relationship with Minnesota West, as well as a, a facility that serves our region for, for, well, its name, Minnesota Emergency Response Industrial Training Center. The initial master plan has three phases to it, if you recall. So 25 years ago, we started this, and we're into that third phase, so we approached the legislature for funding to complete this project. Currently, you know, we serve, and I know Councilman Schaefer informs the, the council of how that facility is utilized, but I just want to share with you maybe a couple of numbers. 2019, 7,200 people received training or attended meetings at the Merit Center. Just ponder that for just a second. And then in 2021, when we're still in a year with some uncertainty or, or some uneasiness when it comes to meeting in large numbers, we served 4,100 people at that Merit Center. In April, I had the opportunity to testify before the Legislative Capital Investment Committee regarding our funding request for $3.6 million. At the end of my testimony, I was very confident and hopeful, confident because I really felt our request for $3.6 million was reasonable. It was going to provide comprehensive law enforcement, fire, and rescue training to our area. And hopeful, because it really serves a community, a, a region in Minnesota, not just 19 counties, but also two Native American Indian communities that can receive services from that. And I maybe need to mention, and it's not just Minnesota, we also serve regions in North Dakota, South Dakota, and Iowa. As you all know, just as Mayor had mentioned, we received notice yesterday that the bonding bill that we're part of, the public safety part of it, was not approved at this point in time. Since yesterday, we've had communication with Senator Dames and Representative Swazinski, and we're still hopeful, you know, hopeful that we remain in that bonding bill and that soon, in the near future, maybe in a few days, that there can be some agreement made. But if not, I can promise you that we'll continue to lean forward into our push next year, the year after, or even the year after, to bring this project to completion. What I'll do is, I can promise that I'll try to keep Administrator Hanson and the mayor informed of any information that I receive, and if the council has any questions, please feel free. And if the council has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'll answer them the best that I can.
Thank you, Jim. Questions for Jim? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you for your work.
And Preston, the current status of the Aquatic Center.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Kind of as Sharon alluded to, each year, getting the aging facility operational has its challenges, and it's no different this year. So we continue to strive and hope that we can get a new facility, whether it's soon that find out something changes or how we plan to go to the next steps. But just last week, while we were cleaning, we had spots in the floor of the main pool that let loose. And there's, there's some hollow spots under there that we didn't open up. But we have pumps that are failing. It just continues to be a kind of a struggle, and we keep fixing it minimally to keep it operational. But if we keep going down this path, we're real close to needing a severe overhaul of several hundred thousand dollars to get back in the game a little bit. It's, it's tough. You don't know what's going to happen until you try, and you try and can't find parts for stuff. Our chemical controllers, they don't get parts for anymore. It's just, it's, it's served its time. And I think we looked back through the pool structure, the body of the main pool. I think it dates back to the 40s. There's rust chunks that we find in the filters. They're coming off the pipes somewhere, and eventually, they're just going to be gone. So I don't know when, if it'll be this year, next year, or five years. But we continue to kind of battle through it, and it's just the great unknown, I guess. So if there's specifics or any guys want to come out again some other time and just walk through, I'd be glad to do that or kind of get into more detail, too.
Okay. Thank you, Preston.
Any, everybody always talks about how much this pool leaks every day. And Preston, actually Preston did the math. We figured it out. Preston, we didn't, he did. Figured it out. It's 12,194 gallons per se, and it's a math problem. Our pool literally is leaking that much water because we figured it's two inches a day. You took a quarter inch for evaporation, and we figured out the rest per gallons because it's square footage and math. I believe Preston was 12,194 when he came up with it.
On average. I mean, some days might be more, and some days might be less. But yeah, we're adding even this, this week, nobody's using the pool, and I've added water for four hours each morning, so.
So I just found that, so the public knows, we come up with that number. We figured it out. We also believe that's light because Preston did not figure out the angles in the pool either. So that number's actually light. So when that number is set out there, we are losing that number. That is not a made-up number.
Right. And then the, you know, like anything this year, chlorine and stuff is up considerably. So now we're treating all that water and bringing it all up. So our expenses are kind of exponentially going to grow. So heating the water this year heats up, so.
Preston, people ask me, where's the water going?
I think, not, not officially, but I think we have pipe seams that are leaking.
Seeping into the ground. Anything going into the river?
It could be through, down through the floor and then through sand veins going to the river. Because, I mean, some of the cracks in the floor are three-eighths of an inch. I mean, how far down they go, we don't know.
We can't, we can't run down to the riverbank and see a steady stream coming from, okay.
No, no, it's just, you know, when the, like the diving well's 13 feet deep, you've got a lot of head pressure pushing down and where it's going after it gets through the cement floor.
Yeah.
Some of the rivers might just be absorbed back into the ground.
And I applaud what Councilman Swazinski and you did with the gallons being lost because I think City Administrator Hanson brought that up a couple of days ago. We've got to come up with a number because we hear from 10 to 15, and is that just, pardon my terminology, throwing a dart at a dartboard? So I'm glad that we finally came up with 12,000 to 13,000 gallons of water. I mean, it's, we can prove that, I would say.
Right. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And Sharon, any final points?
I just wanted to add in on the sales tax legislation that the mayor talked about. It's on the screen behind you, that if we, if the legislature does not go back to special session and we don't get this approval of the tax bill, we really seriously have to go back to the drawing board on kind of what our next steps are. The sales tax revenue really was the best option. Obviously, the council agreed to that. And, you know, I don't know what that means for future construction. You know, right now, I'm going to say it means we have to wait. And it's worrisome because Preston's trying to keep it going and, you know, will there be a summer we don't have the pool due to some mechanical failure? And I don't like making threats, but it's reality of the situation we're in. So hopefully, there's a special session, and the chances of that are anywhere between 0% and maybe greater than 50%. But we've heard kind of all those ranges, so hopefully, we can get something to happen.
So if there, in terms of timing, and talking about the sales tax, the special session would need to be prior to the end of August in order to be able to have a ballot on the question on the general election. And it is a general election requirement. So if not this year, then if it was this year, construction was anticipated to happen in 2023. Otherwise, it's 2024 ballot question, construction in 2025 if everything was approved. Given what Preston has reported, that's a long time, so.
A lot of water.
Any other comments, questions? If there was a, a hope, a request, it would be encourage our legislators to advocate for a special session to finish their work. We'll move then to agenda item number 12, Consider the Approval of Labor Agreements Between the City of Marshall and Law Enforcement and Labor Services Incorporated, Local Number 245. With us is Sheila Dubbs, Human Resources Director. Sheila?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, we have a contract that has been ratified by our police supervisors' group. Those are the sergeants with our police force, the LELS 245 unit. Their proposed amendments in the agreement are very consistent with what we presented to you in a prior meeting with the police officers. Most of the changes were changes that the city requested, so I'll review those real briefly. Updates to the dates on the cover page in the contract to reflect a three-year term of 2022 through 2024. Changing page numbers in the table of contents. Article six, the grievance procedure, again, very like what we did in the patrol agreement. We're amending calendar days to business days to simply provide both of us, both the union and the city, with additional time to review and look into any issues that are brought to our attention. Business days helps us do that without having to proceed further in a grievance process prematurely. There's also additional language that complies with Minnesota State statute relating to the arbitrator selection procedures. That is a new requirement in the state statute that was also placed into the other patrol agreement. In Article 12, updates to the contract dates for insurance. Duration, again, updates in the contract dates. And Appendix A, where the wages are, the language is mirroring what we did, what you approved for the LELS group in terms of implementation of the new pay plan and the wage schedules for all three of those years. The union did accept the new pay plan structure and has agreed to the implementation plan consistent with what was already approved for the patrol unit. The wage schedules reflect the same wage package, 2% for 2022, 3% for 2023, and a 3% for 2024. The last document is a memorandum of understanding. That one is also consistent with what you approved for the LELS. And that just assists with administration of payroll so that the changes go into effect the first of the pay period, beginning with, first of the pay period, that includes January 1st. And if there's any questions, I'm certainly happy to address those.
Thank you, Sheila. And thank you for your work on this. Also, Sharon, thank you for your work on this, as well as the representatives of the bargaining unit. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, Sheila and I have had a visit about, and maybe this is more of a legal question. On page 10 of the contract, I'm talking about vacation. It goes from zero to five. The second bracket goes from five to 10. I asked Sheila, I said, should that second bracket and bracket thereafter go from six to 10, six years? Because are people going to look at, is it the start of the fifth year or the completion of the fifth year that I get my additional week of vacation? To simplify things, after Sheila, you and I talked, we probably can't add it to the, more than likely, and I will vote for this contract, just to make that note. But maybe we need personnel to go back and look at this and say, on the completion of your fifth year, you still have, on the complete, then you'll be moved to the next bracket. Or in the completion of your 10th year, you move to the next bracket. We talked about putting months in there, too, but I think, to make it more simple, the completion of five years, then you move to the sixth to 10. Completion of 10 years, you move to 10 to 15.
I looked at a few other agreements.
Just add that, and maybe we have to have the Personnel Committee look at that in the Employee Manual. Because to me, it's, and Dennis, is it the start of the fifth or end of the fifth that I move to the next category? I mean, Sheila said it's four years and 12 months. Well, 12 months is a year.
It's the start of the fifth.
Yeah, so.
See, I would interpret it the other way, but I don't do, you know, the employment here. See, I would say at the end of five years, then you move to year six.
The end of the five years, but the second category says five years. So I don't know.
Zero, two, five, and five to 10.
So there's a history of administration with it with the city. The schedules haven't been adjusted. So we go back to the history of how it's been administered with the city, with the decisions that have been made. And so I have a note. I can make the adjustment to that. The contracts will have to wait, ask me. We can potentially change that. We haven't reached agreement with them yet, so we could do that. But I looked at some other agreements from our comparable cities, and some of those have better language, so we can certainly move to that.
And the only reason I bring it up is that in my past working relationship, people always question, do I get my extra week vacation when I start my fifth or the completion of my fifth?
Here, it's when you start your fifth.
Or start, you know, what? And I even looked at the state policy and Craig, and that was, that's based, you get so many hours per year of service, you know.
Right, it's all on anniversary date.
Anniversary date. So it, I think, I don't know what's the right way and what's the wrong way, but to avoid any, and maybe there's no confusion, maybe I'm the only one that's confused, but I just bring it up for future, you know, future consideration.
Any other questions for Sheila?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Are you able to vote? I did. I'm not able to vote.
We voted, didn't we? We're going to do it again.
I voted twice, so I got you covered.
Close the voting. Didn't seem to accept mine. Take yours. I had voted yes, but so, could be a problem. We'll move then to the next agenda item. Agenda number 13, Consider the Request for Proposals for Indoor Recreation Facility and YMCA Collaboration Feasibility. Sharon?
So if you don't mind, I think I'm going to move to the podium because I have a 13 brief slides I want to present, and that way I can kind of see what's on the screen. My apologies, I am fighting a cold today, so I'm a little bit off, and I will try to be brief, as I know at least one of you has maybe some upper respiratory, too. So just going to give a little background on why we're presenting this RFP. And I don't know if, EJ, if you want to just flip the slides forward? So background on input from the community. Even though we've done a great job on input, we can always seek more. And I'll just give you some history. Just recently, our comprehensive plan update included a lot of input sessions, focus groups, surveys, and public open houses. And I'll show you some of their responses on things to do in indoor recreation. And then, of course, the city council commissioned in early 2021, and was conducted in October, the Park and Rec Survey, talking about, you know, kind of quality of life in different projects. The other feedback we got was from the branding survey, where they actually did survey, I think it was, it was around 800, which is quite a large number as well. And that really kind of pointed out, too, that there was a lack of entertainment and activities, and that even though we have a high percentage, or rather, that there's a strong commitment to sporting tournaments and events, that there's still a need to expand the community's recreational offerings. And then in 2017, the YMCA did conduct some survey on future needs as well, both in recreation and facilities. So just to review again, you've seen some of these slides, but I want to pull these up again. This is from our 2021 survey. You know, most importantly, there wasn't, very little disagreement on the importance of park and recreation to the quality of life in our community. And, you know, overwhelmingly, there's just strong support for the roles of parks and recreation in our community. It does encourage people to visit Marshall, live in Marshall, and just overall feeling a quality of life. This is another important statistic, and it helped drive a future discussion at the council when it came to sales tax discussion, not only with the Aquatic Center, but other future areas. But we surveyed what are some other areas we, we think we could get support from the public. And walking and biking trails, as you can see here, was a large, large-supported recreation, but also a large indoor play area. And then some other things, like an indoor turf playing field. So this next few slides just covers what our comprehensive plan update consultant provided to us. And, you know, what's one favorite thing about Marshall? Lots of comments about our parks, the community, the small-town feel, very similar to our branding survey that we also seen. We also asked, or the consultant did, least favorite thing, just lack of things to do in the community, not enough things for the kids to do, and, you know, just not many options in the winter. Things we kind of are aware of. Issues and opportunities that they think Marshall needs to prioritize in the next 20 years. At the top of the list is year-round recreational opportunities. And I know we also have our YMCA director in the audience. He can also kind of expound on this, their request for facilities and usage, which has competing demands, even though they have a great facility, there's some, some future needs for them as well. So I believe in late January, when we came to council to discuss further the sales tax revenue, and we needed a formally adopt a resolution to proceed, that was then submitted to the legislature. We covered some of the areas of future needs, and some of these amounts were really just kind of guesses, to be honest. If we were truly going to go forward on it, we'd have to do some further analysis. But obviously, the Aquatic Center, but at that time, the council really talked heavily about indoor recreation and a facility to kind of meet what you may hear from the community on an individual basis or from groups, and what we were kind of looking to do. One thing we did mention to the council in late January was Marshall Area YMCA. And we talked a little bit about their capital campaign, and could indoor recreation facility in some manner kind of cooperate with YMCA? These were the two specific projects that were adopted by the city council in the resolution for sales tax. We have since, obviously, are aware that the legislature, specifically our representatives, really wanted to focus in on the Aquatic Center and not include the indoor rec. One of the challenges with proceeding with an indoor rec facility for sales tax revenue requests at the legislature is you really requests at the legislature is you really got to have a lot of data, feasibility of success in the community, and how does that facility kind of meet the needs of the future? We don't really have that at this point. We, again, got really good public input, but what that really looks like, North Mankato's done quite a bit of work, they're looking at an indoor rec facility, they had requested bonding dollars, which I think for the future could be an option for the City of Marshall, not just looking at sales tax, but maybe making a formal request for bonding. And if we had some information and data to back it up, I think it would lend well to testimony, and I know the mayor, who testified for both House and Senate, can certainly agree with that. He's listened to the other ones, and fortunately for us, this year, just keeping it to the Aquatic Center, I think, made it much more successful. March 22, the YMCA did make a presentation to the council, and they talked about four things, declining membership, and it really started with COVID, but the recovery from COVID still isn't where it needs to be. That has meant a loss of revenue in 2021, and even at the beginning of 2022, so they seen a little bounce back from membership, and it still has been equating to a loss of revenue for them. So their long-term look is challenging, and as a community, what do we want to happen with this facility? And maybe we're early in this process, and this is something we can do when there's greater peril, but it also might be a good opportunity to do some pre-planning and forethought on what the future of the YMCA is. I don't think as a community, we want to see the facility close, and it's not just a simple exercise facility. Obviously, the indoor pool, the program they do with summer camps and so forth, is a great community benefit. I want to go back to those two points, sorry, I went a little long there, but they also did mention deferred capital for maintenance, elevators, the pool floor, I'm missing a whole bunch of things, but I think it's near $1 million for capital for maintenance items. And then, most of you are aware, they did try to pursue a capital campaign, $5 million for improvements, and I think it was late last year, maybe early this year, that they actually paused that capital campaign. They just didn't have strong enough interest at this point, and the uncertainty, I think, of where they were at as a facility and an organization, and then also COVID kind of lended to that. This is my last slide. I did include in the packet the request for proposals, and two main purposes would be to look at the feasibility of an indoor recreation facility, and also look at future operations of the YMCA, and determine how that collaboration would work, if any. We know of other communities where the YMCA has been acquired by the city and operated in a different fashion, or the city owns the building and the YMCA continues to operate it, so there are some options there for the city to look at. In addition to just looking at the facility needs, we're hoping this RFP looks at the future of recreation. Pickleball, which maybe 10 years ago was not really heavily talked about, is the fastest-growing sport in the nation right now, and what's the future of youth sports, which Marshall has been very, very successful, but what are those future recreation needs? And we have heard from the YMCA about collaboration in recreation, but what does that look like? And is that in the best interest of our community? We do a very good job as a Community Services Division, operating recreation, and would it be better under the YMCA? That's some questions. I do have a handout, and I'm just going to go back to my seat, and I'm going to pass this handout out, and what this handout is, is actually the different sports organizations that are in the City of Marshall, and I know Craig, Councilmember Schaefer sits on the Sports Amateur Commission, we have representation there, but it isn't inclusive of everybody because we are limited in our course on membership, but when you look at this handout, you can see there's really a lot of people we need to talk to, and we haven't really done that yet, and this study would be able to do that. So I'll hand that out and sit back in my seat.
My name, Paul Saatch.
I don't know if the YMCA Director wanted a comment on anything, or, I had him present just in case there was some questions.
Marshall, is there's questions at all?
Okay, we'll open up for any questions or discussion.
One of the things I mentioned is, I know we don't have Councilmember Meister present tonight, I don't know if this is something you want to bring back for his consideration and weight. I know that he voiced vocal support and had some reasons for that, but I'll leave that up to the council and go from there.
Just, you know, a few things going back, just remembering back 20-some years ago, when I was on the YMCA Board to build a building and part of the building committee on that, and, you know, that's been a while ago, you know, 20 years ago, building has served us very well, and we know that, you know, buildings don't last forever, you got to put maintenance and everything else into it. I think in light of where we're at right now with, you know, our situation with our own Aquatic Center, you know, it's a good time to look at, you know, how, you know, is there things we can do together? It may not be the most ideal, I know there's a lot of citizens that are in favor of an outdoor pool, and, you know, obviously, with the list of what we've got, we've got a lot going on all over the community, and it takes quite a few hands to get involved in doing that. So I would speak in favor of doing this request for proposal, just to see what the possibilities are, and see what may happen out of there. Again, we mentioned on the other one, that doesn't mean we're committed to anything, but it's worth a look at, you know, somebody studying what could happen in the future, like you're saying, what other sports are out there, what other activities are out there, are there areas we're not covering? You know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, with coming up an official sport of, you know, either the co-ed volleyball or boys' volleyball in high school, how much of that are we getting into? You know, there's a lot going on in that area, so, yeah, I think it's well worth having a study and taking a look what can happen here.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking quick at the list of different sports and associations that are going on just here in the Marshall area, you know, just quick back to Marsh and the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission, there's a lot of requests from other sports that don't actually have a seat at the commission to have input, and it's not that they're not all recognized because they are, but it takes a pretty significant position in the community as far as bringing in tournaments and doing other things to actually have a seat there. So I think doing this study kind of helped pull all that out, because we do have contact with them and get some input, but they don't have an active chair there, and right now, that's kind of our main conduit, besides through the Convention and Visitors Bureau, you know, if they're doing certain tournaments and asking for support and help from there. So I, too, support this. I think it would be good to flush that out, and for sure, to help them get a voice and kind of show a presence, and for us to better understand how their needs and desires can get fit, and, again, more people at the table is more support, and support equals money, money equals feasibility and longevity, so I think it's a good idea, I'm also in favor of it.
Any other input?
Mr. Mayor, just, Sharon, are we, the RFP, and to spend $40,000? My question, because I've been on record of saying we have to get all the players to the table, SMSU, Marshall Public Schools, and in fact, in the letter in our packet this evening, it says, on dated February 16, from the Y, in order to facilitate the above, they're talking about the co-agreement with the city, we can discuss further their participation financially by the Marshall's here. I guess I would like to know how much we're going to contribute financially, and if we're going to include SMSU and Marshall Public Schools, because again, Marshall, SMSU just spent a considerable amount of money renovating their pool. I mean, I think we have to take all that into consideration, we don't need three indoor pools in Marshall, I don't believe, you know, I don't, I mean, it'd be nice, but I don't think we need them, I don't think we can afford them. So my question is, why aren't we, I'm sure during the RFP process, we'll include them, but I would like to see them included from the very beginning.
Yeah, those are very good questions. I've seen one feasibility study that involved just the YMCA and a city similar to the size of Marshall, around 24,000 for the study, and I didn't want to have that number alone because this really goes beyond just the YMCA, so I really kind of took a guess at it. That's why you see maybe the range there, and I think for the YMCA, and I'll just speak for them, I think it kind of depends on, you know, what these numbers look like. They've been pretty, pretty open about cost sharing, obviously, this benefits them if there's some cooperation, and, you know, is it at a 50% level, or, you know, maybe a little bit less, but somewhere in there, so I don't know what that amount is. And then also for SMSU and Marshall School Districts, I think that's included in the RFP, where we mentioned SMSU and Marshall School Districts. One of the things that we don't have right now, but hopefully we do soon, is we need the Marshall Area School District's Athletic Director to start, they get transition there, and then also the SMSU's new Athletic Director. So I think those two positions are going to be really key, too, and I know there's some, they'll have a kind of a learning curve, but definitely, we want to include them. I did not talk to SMSU or Marshall Schools about cost participation on the study, though.
Somebody told me that New Ulam recently built an indoor facility, you know anything about that?
Preston might be able to expound on that.
And how it was funded and what it's used for, I mean, just curious.
I believe it was paid for by the city, and it's just like a community center, but like more so like rental rooms and stuff for like parties and that kind of thing.
But they have a big wide-open space to use for?
I haven't been there, I've just heard.
I actually believe that was local option sales tax.
Was it?
Yeah, they do have that, because I know this is lots of renovations, so the baseball fields, and that was through local option, so it might have been part of that, too, yeah. I don't know all the details of it, and I've heard good things of it.
And it's very good to see this list of, and I'm sure it's like Councilman Schaefer's, it doesn't include everybody, but this is probably 2/3 of the organizations we have in town, so are we going to be able to satisfy every single one? I would doubt it, but we're going to probably look at the majority of them and say, how can they adapt or come to terms with a big indoor facility? Because I brought that up when we did the survey, I was adamant about they, I'll support an aquatic center, but I'll also support an indoor facility of some sort that Marshall can use from October through April, you know, and 12 months out of the year, but in the winter months is when we really struggle.
Yeah, I think we'd want it to benefit everybody.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Just how you get to that point and what it includes.
So council is our support for the going forward with a request for proposals for this study, so I would entertain a motion.
I saw a move.
I will second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. EJ, once again, my voting is not functional. So let's go to a voice vote.
Operator here.
Yeah. You want to close voting?
Show me what's there, or?
And my vote is yes. And...
Russ, pretty quick to speak about operator here.
I voted, it says right here, it says accepted.
It says refresh.
It says right here, accepted.
Well, regardless, the motion does pass. I think from here on out, we'll go on voice vote, given that we have some issues, so that motion does pass. Agenda item number 14, this is the Request for Proposals, City Attorney Services. Sharon, I'll turn to you again, we've had some prior discussion on this, but go ahead.
Okay, so in your packet is Request for Proposals for City Attorney Services, and it's broken down into three categories, General Counsel Services, Land Use Services and Criminal Discussion with staff revolved around, you know, what does this look like for the City of Marshall, and how might it change, and to the negative or the positive for the city, and as we talked further, we felt that maybe some of the work done locally is a greater benefit, let me rephrase that, some of the legal services done locally is a benefit to the City of Marshall, Criminal Services as an example, just the proximity, Police Department, our court system, and then some of our land use issues, zoning, assessments, some enforcement, and we're quite aware that, as an example, our current City Attorney is present for a lot of those discussions, planning commission and so forth. So there is a desire to maybe look at, you know, how can we break this into three and give the City Council options on looking at things like proximity to the City of Marshall? So that's really the reason we broke it into three, and I appreciate our current City Attorney kind of pointing out overlap, what does this mean and look like? In the General Counsel Services, we do put a section of the Charter in there regarding the City Attorney, and it is the intention of the General Counsel Services that that person would be the City Attorney, and technically, and you can correct me, too, Dennis, on this, but, you know, they would give, really be the overseer of legal services for the City of Marshall. Some of the things that we would have to work out if there was a splitting of these in three would be, you know, what does it look like for approval of work being done, and how do we ensure that the City Attorney who's appointed is kind of aware of what's going on? To me, that would be really determined by the contract that's eventually signed. Right now, we, I think, have a memorandum of agreement with the current City Attorney that kind of details some of that. So that was one of the reasons it was split into three. If you're going to ask for my opinion on how law firms would bid on this, I see them bidding it on them, really, probably on the Civil Services, which would be General Counsel and Land Use, and then Criminal maybe could be done separately. There's, not all the law firms want to get into that Criminal side, it's kind of a specialty niche for them. You could have an attorney that bids on all three as one, they can submit a bid for all three RFPs, and so you could have one attorney for all three. So I envision that there's likely going to be, the Land Use and General Counsel may be bid on by the same law firm, and Criminal may be different, but, you know, we'll see. As you pointed out, we're seeking what the options are and kind of what happens. I did put in the, in the RFP a timeline, we've got time, we're well ahead of the contract effective date, which would be January 1 of 2023, and I also want to point out, you know, we always reserve the right to reject any and all proposals, so if the City Council, after receiving proposals, wants to do a different process or continue with past practice on how you've appointed the City Attorney, certainly, the City Council can do that, they can reject all proposals and move forward with past practice for appointing the City Attorney. So just some background on why this was split up, I do appreciate the, you know, how is this going to work, and is there some overlap, and maybe there's some more clarification on that, and the General Counsel Services... And maybe, maybe there's some more clarification on that in the, in the general counsel services, kind of pointing out that that would be the appointed attorney per charter. So that is what I had for these requests for proposals. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Want to make any comments now or?
Other than the effective date would be January 10th. By the charter, you start the first meeting in January after the general election. So it'd be January 10th of 2023, not January 1.
Yeah. And that's the other language. This is unrelated to this discussion. That needs to be addressed by the Charter Commission because that potential gap on even the mayor's term, you potentially could have a period where you wouldn't have a mayor during that time. So, so, and that's charter language.
That's right.
It just needs to get cleaned up. So there's a number of things the Charter Commission needs to take a look at. Anything else, Dennis?
No.
Any, any, well, general comments or direction?
Well, I guess I made my point earlier, and I think looking at options is good.
Yeah. Yeah, I think everybody has made comments earlier. Thank you. So that's, including me. So that's fine.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the RFP.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
Second.
By Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Or no, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does pass. Agenda item number 15, the proposed 2023 budget timeline. EJ, do you have this?
Yes.
Mulberg, our Director of Administrative Services.
So I've reviewed the budget timelines used in recent years and looked at the meetings that are already scheduled and came, came back with some that I propose as additional work sessions or special meetings and wondered if it would be good to just try to get those on everyone's calendar sooner than later as we're moving forward. So what I came back with includes July 26th, that 4:00 PM work session. It's a normally scheduled meeting that day at 5:30, which would be a work session beforehand. And that would be for, for the community organization type requests, which you've done in the past, typically in July, our first meeting, or excuse me, in August, excuse me, our first meeting in August is actually on a Monday because Tuesday, the 9th, is the state primary day. So the meeting is Monday, the 8th. So I just thought rather than have it on a Monday right before the election with how that could, could impact people to try to do the community requests that last meeting of July. Moving forward then, because we have the council seat on that election, it's not in your packet for this, but just to give you a heads up, I'll have, the clerk will come forward with you, but we're probably also looking at having to schedule a canvassing board for that Friday, most likely, at noon or so. We have to do the canvassing board two to three days after the election to try to give Lyon County as much time as possible. They've asked that we wait until Friday to schedule the canvassing board, and the canvassing board is the mayor and council. So that one's on this for today, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. Presuming someone is certified that day, they could potentially take, take the oath and, and start with their first meeting potentially being on the next proposed date, which is August 16th. So that's actually the third Tuesday of the month. So it's not a normal council day, but the idea is to try to do a council work session or special meeting to start at 4:30 that day. So we're starting an hour earlier and go through all capital requests, the operating budgets, and the normal presentation of the preliminary tax base changes to try to do that all in one night. I understand from the past that some council meetings had gone fairly long, and we've tried to do that on a, on a normal council night as well. So that's the proposal there. Moving forward to October, in the past, there, there's always been a work session for health and dental insurance. So the proposal there would be to do that, that first, the first meeting in October, just to do that at 4 o'clock. We already have a 5:30 scheduled that day, a normal session, but the work session would be at 4 o'clock to go through that. And then the adoption would come at the next meeting, you know, regularly, regularly scheduled. Last year, there was a work session after the, the second meeting in November to kind of talk about proposed budgets and levy before the truth and taxation meeting. So the idea would just be to have a work session on or at or after 7:00 PM that night, you know, depending on whenever the council meeting ends, to have that work session immediately following to kind of talk about proposed budgets and levy before the truth and taxation meeting. And then rather than have the, this truth and taxation meeting the same night that the council would have to adopt the final budget and levy, my proposal would include December 6th being a special council meeting, excuse me, at 6:00 PM, which is early so we can start for the truth and taxation meeting. And the idea is that there's a week then in between any public comment we have before the council would have to make final decision to approve the budget. So those are the, the five dates are the ones that are in red we just talked about. You're welcome to change any of them or all of them. It's just I, I wanted to propose some out there so we could try to get some on calendars before everyone else's calendar filled up and we had conflicts.
Any, any issues with any of the proposed dates?
I will not be here the 16th of August. And I know Craig and I, and we've discussed this, and even though it gets long on council days, a lot of us work other jobs, so it works really well if we can drop these on council days. Because we kind of block those days off. I don't care if we start at noon on council day. It's a lot easier for me to block off a council day. You know, February, or August, you're looking at three different days for us to meet within seven days. And it gets, and with your trucking, Greg, you're going to say that gets really tough with me running construction, especially in August. We'll be running through heads cut offs in August. So if we could drop them there, I don't care if we sit here for eight hours on August 23rd. That'd work a lot better for me.
The canvassing board on, I believe it was August 12th, that one, they exit quorum and will last five minutes.
Well, I understand that, but I, it's just, it's still, we have to be back.
I know.
Like today, I bailed in from Fairmont. I had bailed out of Fairmont at 3:30 and hauled very quickly up here.
Director of Public Safety at Marshall.
He does not patrol state highways.
He's got the radio.
His radio is a restorative.
Knows people who does.
Okay. Yeah, but I have no problems. It's, it's up to you guys to set them. I have no problems with it. I just wanted to point out that, I just heard it got long from a couple of the people that were participating last year. So that's why I was suggesting a different day, but if it, I completely understand it. I would suggest the 23rd, not doing it on the 8th, not to have that budget one right before the election the next day.
And that makes sense, too, but that's just my opinion. I'm just one person.
That'd be a council member's first meeting.
Good, long one's a good one to bring him in.
Or her.
Her, him or her, excuse me. Well, let's hope somebody signs up.
So let's go with that then, okay?
Okay. Sounds good.
We'll move then to?
23rd or the 16th?
I think the 23rd is.
23rd.
Okay.
Is there? Do we want to start earlier that day then?
Well, why don't we have staff input on that?
Right.
And, you know, the, I want to be sure it's workable for staff, too, so. What I heard is that there is availability earlier.
Okay.
And December 6th for truth and taxation. Did you say you can't make it?
I don't know on the 6th. I know that's, um, sitting necklace there. I put my shoes out that night. I'm just saying. I mean, that's, I wish somebody would show up to that ones.
Oh, be careful what you wish for.
Yeah. I would like input. I'd like input.
I'll give you plenty of input.
Can I quick relay there that the legislature passed a bill last year that changes the truth and taxation notice? So there's going to be more information that we have to provide to the county that'll be on the notice. So like parcel specific, parcels in Marshall, you'll have to have not just the levy changes or percentage changes, but you're also going to have to have comparison budgets based by, you know, general government, public safety, those types of things, as well as the different types of revenue classes. So we'll see if it really brings more people to the meeting, but, you know, like I said, just in theory, it makes it difficult, I would imagine, to have public input and then turn right around and try to incorporate that if anyone would show.
Right.
Yeah. We can make six. It's.
Right.
It's dark by 5 o'clock, then it's a lot easier to come.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, EJ. Agenda item number 16, consider appointments to various boards, commissions, bureaus and authorities. Earlier this evening, the council met in special session, interviewed candidates for applicants for various boards and commissions. And I'd say at the front, as always, we certainly appreciate the interest of the citizens that are volunteering to serve the community on various boards and commissions. It's essential to the functioning of our boards and commissions. The, based on the, the applications, the interviews at the special session, it'd be my recommendation that Michelle Knife Sterner be appointed to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. This is a reappointment for a term that will end May 31st, 2025. That Joyce Taffte also be appointed, reappointed to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. That term will also end on May 31st, 2025. The, both of whom served a partial, but more than half of a term as the DEI committee was formed for stagger term. So for both of these individuals, this will be considered a second term. And that Lucas Teetz be appointed to the Economic Development Authority. This is a new appointment that will end on May 31st, 2028. I'd offer that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm.
I so move.
Do the other ones that were on there from?
You have planning commission.
Oh, yes.
Are we going to do them separate or are we going to do them all at one?
All at once, and I don't have that in front of me right now.
Let's see, make it a little larger here for you. Amanda?
Yes.
Schroder.
That Amanda Schroder be appointed to the Planning Commission for a term that will end on May 31st, 2025. Kathy Lee would be appointed to the Planning Commission for a term that will end May 31st, 2025. And that Larry Doom would be also appointed to fill a expired term, that term will, on the Planning Commission will end May 31st, 2023. Thank you, John. Once again, I offer all of those appointments as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm.
Mr. Mayor, I'd request that we vote on each of them individually.
I'd back that request.
Would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we vote on, on each person or?
Each, each commission.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we approve the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, both those candidates.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ to appoint Michelle Knife Sterner and Joyce Taffte to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for the terms I described earlier. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. You have Planning Commission, let's take that next.
I'll make a motion to approve the three listed.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the appointment of?
Amanda Schroder.
Amanda Schroder.
Kathy Lee and Larry Doom.
Kathy Lee and Larry Doom.
Thank you.
For the terms that have been described. Discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then Economic Development Authority will be our third.
Make a motion to approve Lucas Teetz's Economic Development Authority.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
The reason I want to separately is Lucas is a great guy, but I think that we should pause on this one until after we get a RFP back from our insurance, which is coming soon. Because I believe last year he was involved with Bremer and Cayman for the insurance quotes and trying to sell us on this. And I just think we've had several people from Bremer Bank on the Economic Development Authority for years on end, and I would like to maybe see if we can explore to find another business, another entity that'd be willing to support them. So there's a couple of reasons why, and I guess nothing against Lucas. I just think Bremer Bank, with the business we do there, with the business that we do with our insurance, that it borders on possibly conflict of interest. That's just, I, that's why I will not support that one.
That was addressed in the interview, and I think you weren't able to be there, but Lucas did handle that question quite well, so, about separation from his occupation, from his, his role as an active citizen. But I appreciate your, your point. Other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Division of the House, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? The motion does pass. Remaining items on the agenda include the information items, 17, 18, and 19, and 20, the building permits. Are there any comments about the information items?
I have one individual item thing I'd like to bring up, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, commission, or reports. Right.
Are we going to go to council reports?
Right. So not listed on the agenda, but we will add, edit.
I wonder if we can keep moving.
Board and commission reports, and I have none.
I have none.
John?
EDA did meet. We completed a public, a public hearing and sold the two lots out in Parkway Edition. And also listened to a discussion on, and a proposal for regarding the mall locations, so, coming up. Utilities as well met. One of the things, actually, a number of things to bring up there. And you may have heard it in the news already, but just kind of a hierarchy, there's, of course, Marshall's MMU, and there's, which obtains our power, energy, electrical energy from Missouri River Energy Services. While above Missouri River Energy Services is a organization referred to as MISO, mid, nah, well, not even going to try. Anyway, they, they control the distribution area from basically up near Canada all the way down to Louisiana. And they have brought forward that there could be within our area rolling blackouts starting this summer. It has nothing to do with MMU, nothing to do with Missouri River. It's just that the, they're believing the transmission grid system may not be able to hold the energy needs for the entire area, and they would have to institute some rolling blackouts. So just a warning that that could be coming. Let's see, a couple of other areas. Most of that, we'll let kind of go. We did provide some assistance through MMU for Granite Falls when the storm hit. They had a number of line damages. And another lightning hit on the system that did, caused a little bit of a flicker. It didn't really create any outages on it. In regards to the storm here, there was an outage that did occur in Marshall. That's when a tree actually landed on one of the transformers. The transformer kept, actually, it didn't, that didn't cause an outage. The transformer kept working, but it was, took a beating anyway from the tree falling on it, so. And I think that's, oh, the last thing I wanted to bring up is changeover in the commission there. They now have new, they switch roles as far as who chairs a committee and do a switch around. And as well with that, taking on a new aspect, which is coming up with the key performance indicators, which they've put together a whole packet of items that the board can look at. And there's actually like 20-some different items that they refer to, but rather than taking time at the meeting, you know, hold it up that way so you can get to see it on camera. It's a real quick dashboard. Green is good, red is an issue that needs to be talked about. So as the commission looks at it, they go through all the different points of concern that has been pointed out, such as distribution reliability, debt service reserves, I'm just hitting a few of them here, employee safety. They do have criteria in each one of those, and if there's, for some reason, it falls below that guideline or that number, then they put out a red, it doesn't meet the target, and that's a point of discussion at the commission. So just a kind of a neat way of covering all kinds of subjects, but not dwelling a lot of time on something that. lot of time on something that doesn't need to have a lot of time on it. So covering a lot of areas in a short period of time, so I think that's about it.
Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only report I have is CBB, about the only thing that's come out, they're still planning on holding a concert with a big name entertainer on the Thursday night prior to homecoming weekend out at SMSU. There were, no details have been coming, because they have to talk about hiring the firm, I believe, out of Colorado that would come up and set everything up, cover the, cover the field with plywood and bring all the acoustics and everything else you need. But that's still in the planning and talking stages. The only other thing I have is just a reminder for city officials here, joint library board meeting with the county scheduled for June 10th, which will discuss the library budget for 2023. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing quick, just kind of, you know, spring, early summer, we get the wonderful smell of smash, fresh mowed grass, and in compliance with our MS4 requirements, I'd remind citizens, don't blow your grass in the gutter. If it's convenient and you do, please sweep it back up, and we have a really nice compost site out on the north end of town off of North 7th, take it out there. Don't let it wash down the manholes and into the Redwood River. It kind of defeats what we're trying to do. The next item is, I, I just want to thank the, I had some questions that came up mostly through the users of the ballfields over at Independence Park, but the seeding now has taken place actually today out around the ballparks and stuff. And that, if you haven't been out there to take a look at the work that's been done, swing through there, it's pretty awesome. It looks really good. And then the third thing is, this weekend obviously is Memorial Day, and I just want to take a, just a brief moment and thank all of our first responders, our police, fire, EMS, all the people that, that work within the community to keep us safe, all of our military past and present, and of course, all those families that have, have suffered a loss with their military. And just remember, take a, take a moment to remember why we have a nice, long holiday weekend on Memorial Day, and, and just keep all those families in active service in your thoughts and prayers. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Jim?
I just have one thing, and I'd like to give credit to staff where credit is due, and Preston actually called me last week, and he must have worked at financing, but he called me and he says, you know, Jim, you may see a big bill on our spreadsheet for chlorine. Yeah, and he said, I bought it all upfront because the cost of it is going to go up substantially, I don't know, he said June 1st, he told me the date and stuff. And it was a substantial amount of money he saved by looking ahead, thinking and saying, you know, let me talk to who writes out the checks and see if we can't make this happen, and they did. And that's just an example of our staff taking our tax dollars and spreading them as far as they can. And I just want to give credit to the staff for doing that, and I, and I appreciate that, so.
Very good. Russ?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
John?
Just a little bit of a reminder, we have open house or, or inclusive park, and I think that's at three o'clock tomorrow? 3:30?
Yep.
So try and be out there, take a look at it. I don't know if Jason, you and I talked about one other subject out in Tiger Pond, I don't know if it's, you got that taken care of or worth bringing up anymore on that, a nice little crop of yellow flowers that are growing out there. So pretty deep.
We'll make sure it gets followed up on.
Mr. Mayor, just, maybe someone pressed it on, but I noticed the Turtle Park, Freedom Park, the ballfield needs some, some tender living care with weed spraying. The weeds are, are growing in the field. I know they're busy, but if we can swing over there and let's not forget to maintain some of the parks we do have, you know, and I know they're, they're swamped, so, in between our rain, you know.
Anything else, Ben?
Nope. I'm done.
I have just two things, and the, first off, just a reminder to residents of Ward One, where there is an open position and filings, which there has been none to date, but the filing deadline is one week from today on May 31st, end of business day. So confident that there'll be can, applicants that will come forward, so. Just some comments about the storm event, and Jim, if I could ask you to come forward. The, first off, the, as we all know, we had two successive, or two storm events in succession. The first was a very heavy rainstorm, and then, of course, the next night, the, the very heavy windstorm. And the, I would just commend the, our public safety staff, our public work staff, and all of our other staff that were really on alert and were prepared, you know, should that situation have been any, any worse. And Jimmy, you may want to comment on kind of the storm response two nights or two afternoons in a row, as well as make some comments about the siren, the siren situation, the investigation that you have done.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate, I appreciate that. And, you know, I did send you guys maybe some communication through email, just trying to briefly explain what had happened in that event with the severe storm that came through in the winds. I can tell you that we had partially activated emergency operations center, and I want to give thanks where it's really due, and it's also, Alex was a big part of that. Alex and I and some other people had met out at the merit center, our emergency operations center, where we had really monitored the storm as it was coming in, kind of throughout the day. And I think the public had some awareness as to what was going to be happening. And we, you know, technology's great when it works. And, and unfortunately, we found a weakness in our system on that specific night, on that Thursday night of that storm. We had, I had given the direction to Lyon County to activate our warning siren system, and we realized that as soon as I activated the sirens or called for activation sirens in Marshall, all the other communities in Lyon County did so after that. Problem is, as we found the weakness in our system, Alex, and I'm going to try to explain this the best that I can, is that our, our signal to our sirens goes out over a specific channel, our fire channel. And as soon as they announced that I was activating the sirens, all these transmissions started coming in, and they overrode, they took priority over our paging system that triggers our transmitter that sends a signal to the sirens. And was within, you know, seconds, less than seconds, as soon as that transmission started to happen. So we found the weak point in our system. We worked hard to identify what had happened that night, and had a lot of communication the following day with, from Lyon County to our, our first line, our frontline warning system, who, who does a service, the service agreement with our, our siren system in Marshall, and identified what it was. And we worked hard then to put a couple alternative steps in place to where this hopefully won't ever happen again. We'll still use Lyon County, but we have alternatives to where we can activate the siren system now from our emergency operations center, thanks to Alex and his due diligence and figuring out how that can work. And we also did some training with police department supervisory staff on how we can manually activate the sirens from our transmitter located in the, the guts of, of the Lyon County emergency, or, or LEC. So we put safety measures in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again. But I also just want to remind people that that's, you know, our warning system is important, but it's just one piece of that puzzle. You know, we now have code red in Lyon County, I encourage our residents to look into that. And maybe that's something I'm going to, not maybe, I am going to work closer with Lyon County to see how we can push that out to our community members, and, and also apps, just pay close attention to your phones. I'm hoping that all the council members that day receive notification through your, through code rad on your phones that a storm was coming. So it's obviously a piece of the puzzle, but it's not the cure-all for everything. So I encourage our residents to do what they can to always stay in tune. Technology has come a long ways, you know, and I think Sharon knows that I've had communication with her, discussions, you know, the role that our emergency, our warning system really plays in the, in the city marshal, and it's just one part of it. So thank you for your patience, and I'm willing, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me and, and answer the questions the best I can.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
I have nothing.
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I don't have a lot to talk about either. Independence Park, as Councilman Schaefer mentioned, there was some seeding work going on today around the ballfields, so that was good to see. I know they have been trying to get in there, and they look at it weekly, if not more often than that, and it's just been too wet and unfit, and maybe going to rain some more. So they did get some of it done up from the concession building up to the ballfields. Down the lower lying areas, they still couldn't get that seeded, but they've been kind of farming it and turning it and trying to get it ready. On the other project, but where the pond is at, they were doing some farming of that dirt as well today, trying to get it prepared to put the concrete trail in for that portion. We'll look for that to, to come soon, weather permitting. I believe the contractor, ANC Excavating, for the rest of the trail in the park, they should be back next week. They're telling us Tuesday to start doing more trail work, so we can all keep our eyes up for that. So I imagine, once again, weather permitting and things don't get shuffled around, that we could see them next week, working in earnest in the park again. You'll note that some concrete got put into the plaza over the last few days, so thank you to the street department for their help with that. They poured a few of the pads out there for the plaza work to get out of Preston's way. So nice to see that done and see that starting to move. Noted, Councilman De Kramer on the weeds. I believe I forgot to pass that along. I've sent the message now, so we'll, we'll try to follow up accordingly. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Any question for Jason?
Just, why, can I, yeah. Do we have a bike rack for the building?
Yes.
We do.
We do, and I think we were waiting for the new concrete to cure a little bit, the, the two pads, I think there's two pads that are closest to the building. That's where we intend to put the bike racks in.
All right.
We could temporarily put them in another location, but they might be, I'm not sure what Preston, where he wants to put it, so.
Have you got a, just curious?
Is there one out in the back? Okay.
We got the scooters in front.
Scooter's in front, guys.
I actually should have reported on the scooters. I didn't do that. We're going to meet this week, so I'm going to include public safety director and our engineer and talk about, you know, how we want to go forward. The agreement comes back to council. It actually expires at the end of May, so I just kind of said, good faith, we'll keep the current one in where we're at, and then we'll bring back what we think the council will approve, hopefully at the next council meeting. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Good. Dennis?
The closing on the sale of property to the developer for Block 11 will occur tomorrow afternoon, and I do believe that the developer hopes to start, start work on the site June 1. So that's why we, it's been a scramble to get all the documents and paperwork put together, but they, everything will be filed with the courthouse tomorrow, and that one's proceeding. And then late last week, there were a number of staff members that participated in a discussion concerning Broadmoor Valley and its future. Where do we go from here? There's, you know, the $500,000 infrastructure grant that has not yet been accepted by the property owner. And I did speak to his local attorney today about that, and there continues to be hope that the grant will be accepted and work will be done to improve the park.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion on that motion? If not, by voice, photo, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Then motion passes unanimously.